Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 15th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. We were purposely before an executive session, so we're already, the meeting is adjourned. The meeting is open. Can I have an approval of the minutes, a motion to approve the minutes of the May 25th, 2021 regular meeting?
Second.
Any changes or amendments? Orders and favors? Okay. And now our report of the superintendent.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to see, this is the most number, this is a record-setting Board of Education meeting. So, I'm really excited about that. And it's so appropriate because tonight we will be making the recognition of our retirees and the RTA members who are being recommended for tenure this evening, as well as appointing new members of the faculty. And I think it's just a nice fitting way to conclude the year, so I'm very excited about that. I'm going to keep my remarks brief because we do have a lot of celebrating to do, and we're also very fortunate to have the principals to share their building reports today as well. Every chance that I can, I try to express my gratitude and appreciation for our teaching faculty and our professional staff, but tonight I do want to take a moment to recognize the principals, the directors, assistant principals, for making the end-of-year activities special and being so creative in their implementation. I know that each principal will be sharing some of those details later tonight, but I want to express my appreciation for the district administrators for their dedication and commitment throughout this year of unrelenting uncertainty. So, thank you to each of you. I'm also excited to say that the CDEP committee had its second meeting, so that's a lot of meetings compared to the last few years, so I'm so excited about it. Most specifically, this last session, we looked at the mission, the vision, and the core values and discussed how it can be used. What was really special about that is it takes it from being an archive or a static document, and it creates it to create momentum in the district. There was a very honest discussion about the extent to which it's been effective in stimulating inspiration and growth, and consensus emerged around the value of creating systems of and approaches to using the document as a beacon for moving the district forward. Further, we discussed the benefit of creating a more system-wide ownership of the CDEP plan, starting first with communicating the central nature of the discussion with the district through open town hall sessions with all employees, and in general, for the whole community, just narrating our story better, telling more and opening up our schools and all the great things that are happening, narrating and telling that story more. This aligns with other discussions that we've had at board committees, and so I'm really excited about those developments. And that concludes my report.
Any questions? All right, so we have an opportunity now for public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Okay, so we're going to move on to main part of the evening, a recognition of our 2020-21 retirees. So, tonight, we're going to honor nine staff members who are retiring, and we absolutely wish them nothing but health and happiness on their well-earned retirement. The experience and knowledge, it's going to be difficult to replace. Each one of them have brought something unique to the students of Rhinebeck. We cannot thank them enough for everything they've contributed. In total, this year's retirees have dedicated 223 years of service. We'd like to take, to share a few memories about each retiree from some of your colleagues. And if everyone could just hold their applause till the end, we'd appreciate it. Good timing, Terry. You're first. First, we have our sixth-grade math teacher, Terry Kupiak. Terry is the queen of microwave popcorn, perpetually feeding her schoolkids when helping them with homework. Terry put her heart and spirit into everything she did, student-centered. Terry made it a point to be in the hallways as students, young and old, pass by. She would personally greet each child. Her welcoming enthusiasm spread energy and a sense of belonging. With a purse as big as her heart, Terry always took care of those in need, whether it was peanut butter crackers, a bag of groceries, a new outfit, a yearbook for a student, or just a Jolly Rancher, Ms. Kupiak took care of those around her. No one could fill a gym with middle schoolers to chant louder than Ms. Kupiak. Whether it was a volleyball game, relay races, on field day, Terry had the power to inspire a crowd. Her spirit will forever echo in our hallways and hearts. And then someone said, "Wearing my parent hat, I'd like to say that Terry inspired confidence in my daughter and made her believe in herself as a math student and a student in general. I will be forever grateful."
So, next, we have Christine Fritz, 20 years as a high school science teacher. And I haven't actually met Ms. Fritz in person, so I don't know who to direct to. She's not here. Oh, should I wait?
No, no. Some people couldn't be here.
So, that would explain why I didn't recognize her, and totally, yeah. So, one staff member shared, "I met Christine Fritz 20 years ago when she was coaching each of our daughter's soccer team. Since then, we've been best of friends. We share our love for biology, butterflies, birds, and especially dragonflies. I will miss our walks, talks, and most of all, her cheery good morning greetings." And another wrote, "Christine Fritz is a person that loves art and science. She never failed to come into my room and comment about how well she liked the current display. Who will I send my extra bug mandalas to next year? Thank you for your generous and kind personality."
Okay. Next, I have Gayan Aligoo. She is 35 years retired as a teacher aide at Chancellor. She always puts students' needs first. She's a wonderful listener, always willing to provide a sympathetic shoulder for her students and some staff as well. She has a great work ethic and a very sweet person.
Next, we have Sue Miller, who was here for 26 years, including subbing, and teacher aide at CLS. One of the most thoughtful people I have ever had the pleasure of working with, extremely encouraging human being that always made herself available to anyone who needed her, a positive force and a wonderful role model, and loves potato chips.
Next is Anthony Chinesay, eight years. Let's see. He's an extremely flexible when it came to his schedule and always willing to help wherever needed. He had a wonderful presence in the classroom. Tony loved working with the fourth grade. He was always willing to dive in and do whatever was needed, whether it was rolling up his sleeves, mixing plaster, painting, planting, or just help with day-to-day work. He always did it with a smile. He bonded with students by sharing stories of his life before CLS, travels to Italy, and loves, and love of sports cars. He will be missed in the fourth grade. I know he's not here today, but he also did send a message that he's doing well in retirement and loves being at the beach.
Next, we have Ernie Welch, who was here 27, over 27 years as the Rhinebeck High School French teacher. I was Ernie's classroom neighbor for the last four or five years, and I can say his boundless energy made it a great neighborhood to teach in. Opera and French hip-hop blasted at the top of every class. French vocab and verb conjugations shouted with joie de vivre and lots and lots of birds at the window. I recall one time he and Ed Davenport ran into my room suddenly during a class to get a better view of an unusual bird outside the windows. It was a bird nerd emergency. We also have, "Ernie showed me that it was acceptable to be passionate about your subject, have high expectations for your students, and work for a stronger union. They are not contradictory." And another person wrote, "Mr. Welch," I still can't call him Ernie, "was an excellent French teacher and a warm colleague. He taught the language of French, but perhaps more importantly, he taught me to love languages. When I was presented with an opportunity to teach Spanish, I searched my parents' basement for my eighth-grade French binder, because I knew if I could teach Spanish the way that Mr. Welch had taught me French, my students would love languages too. Thank you for being such an inspiration." And another, "Ernie was one of the first people I met when I student-taught at Rhinebeck High School over 18 years ago. He warmly welcomed me into the faculty room for lunch and made me laugh and put me at ease. Then, a few years later, I tested our friendship by asking him to chaperone a Battle of the Bands fundraiser, and he agreed. If you've never chaperoned an event like that in a middle-school gym, I and probably he would suggest you keep that streak going." And one more, "I will always remember how I had Mr. Welch as a teacher and was so intimidated by him back in middle school, but I think I learned and remembered more in his eighth-grade French class than in all the other French classes I took later on in life. He is one of my favorite coworkers and will be sorely missed."
Okay, next, Lisa Hackett, high school and chancellor, P.E. teacher, 24 years. Lisa made health and wellness a priority by organizing several rounds of vegan whole-food challenges with colleagues over the years. A few years ago, I went with Lisa in a full bus of high schoolers from Rhinebeck and Red Hook to the March of Our Lives. Unfortunately, our bus broke down on the way to Washington, DC. If you really want to know how patient, enthusiastic, optimistic, reassuring, and kind a person is, 5:00 AM on the side of the road in New Jersey is how you do it. Someone who has given 100% to Rhinebeck High School. When I first started at Rhinebeck High School, Lisa was my go-to for just about any extracurricular activity available, class advising, student council issues. She coached, she's a photographer, a mother, a wife, a quilter, an athlete. Even when her plate was overflowing, she still would offer to help you out even more. I hope that all the energy you put into your work will be put into things you want for yourself now. Congrats.
Next, we have Paula DiMarco, who's here over 28 years, including subbing, as a monitor and then teacher aide. Paula greeted everybody with a smile and a laugh every single day in the lobby in the morning. And another writes, "Even on days and weeks we were all struggling this year, Paula had a smile for every single person who crossed her path." And lastly, "On a good day, Paula is there to share a joke or get your head out of the grind. On a bad day, Paula is there with chocolate and an open offer to help clean up and help organize. I will not be surprised to see Paula on the next hoarder cleanup game show on HGTV."
Okay?
I got Liz, I had to cut it down. I was told not too much, so I had to cut this down. So, Liz Van Karen has been an employee of the district for 37 years, almost to the day. She has been a senior account clerk for the past 35 years. Liz has brought a dedication and professionalism you rarely see. She treated everybody as equals. It didn't matter if it was her boss, like me, or a substitute. It didn't matter. She treated everybody equally. In my 14 years in the business office, I can't recall a single voided check. That's unheard of. She always went that extra, extra mile to make sure everybody was paid, that if there was a timesheet missing, she went and found it, because it was probably on somebody's desk and it just hadn't reached her. Always looking out for, for the employee, and that was her big thing. She was always looking out for the employee. But probably the greatest accomplishment that I can recall was Liz going above the call of duty to see that our new software system was up and running, but also that the employee who was going to replace her was thoroughly trained to ensure that the employees of the district wouldn't see any hiccups when she finally did retire. And I think she accomplished that, and I appreciate that so heartily. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for providing the district and myself for all the knowledge and dedication you brought to your job. You are missed each and every day. But each time you stop by the office, I see that retirement is treating you very well. The business office and I hope that you and Tim will have lots of time to spend together, traveling, and being with your grandchildren. Have a happy and deserved retirement.
We're going to recognize our employees that are getting tenure tonight, and then stick around, we do have some cake to celebrate after that. So, I'm not over to you. Tenure?
The principals.
So, who's going first? Yep?
So, I'd like to, as the principal of the elementary school, I'd like to acknowledge the tenure for Daria Barry. She is someone that was not only a parent at Chancellor, and I had, and all three buildings, obviously, these two, like this big when they were in my building. But she worked as an aide and eventually a teaching assistant, and I have to say, when we had a self-contained class in our building, I can tell you that there was really only one teaching assistant we wanted in that space, and I'm lucky, I have amazing teaching assistants in my building, but, but Daria, we knew was a perfect match for that, that classroom teacher, those students. How she approaches her students and adapts for them, for what's best for them, is amazing to watch. She is one of the sweetest people, heartfelt and honest, and the way she approaches her job is with honesty and, and love for the kids that she services, extremely thoughtful and positive, and one of those people that, in my opinion, really has true passion for the job that she does. And I can tell you, the staff, myself, and the students in my building are better off because of her, and that's why there was no, no doubt that she, she earned tenure, earned every minute of it. So, congratulations, really.
On behalf of my colleague, Mr. Chemnitzer, and myself, we are absolutely delighted to be welcoming Scott Malisi to the ranks of our tenured faculty. Mr. Malisi is a high-energy, enthusiastic, warm, and approachable teacher who has been able to establish really great relationships and rapport with his students. And at the same time, he challenges them in a positive way and in a supportive way with really engaging, can I say this word, really cool music? So, students are always flocking to his classroom. During his classes, he has an uncanny way of being able to distill coaching, I'll call them coaching tips or teaching tips, convey them to students in a way that's very understandable so that they're able to make adjustments during rehearsal, so that for a layperson such as myself, at the end of the rehearsal, you can hear the difference that he's been able to make in the students' performances. He's a wonderful collegial, collaborative person. Mr. Chemnitzer and I, and our faculties and our families, we look forward to his students' concerts for years to come. So, our congratulations to Mr. Malisi.
And I'll just ask if the board would mind suspending the rules so we could have a break for cake? Do you have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Okay, so we have cake outside in the tent, so we can take off our masks and enjoy cake, so please enjoy.
Toward the future for. So, as I started to put my notes together, I decided that no end-of-the-year report could be complete without first acknowledging how far we've come and how much we've overcome this school year. With the tremendous amount of planning and flexibility on the part of faculty and staff, the cooperation and resilience of our students, and I can't emphasize that enough, and the ongoing support of the superintendent and Board of Education, we've accomplished so much. We developed an instructional model that provided direct teacher access for every student and allows students to move seamlessly between a remote learning environment and an in-person learning environment without a loss of instruction. Deployed laptops to all students and learn to operate in a one-to-one environment, and this process was planned to take place over a number of years. In fact, Mr. Jensen and I had a, had a meeting in February of 2019, about a month prior to this happening, and us going out and, and choosing to do this all at once. Our teachers researched, experimented with, and became proficient in the use of a wide variety of software programs while using them in real time. Programs included NearPod Paradigm Jamboard, and it gave students an opportunity to work collaboratively with their peers and to socialize in a digital environment. Our science labs were modified so that all students, whether in-person or remote, were able to participate in hands-on learning and conduct experiments and collect data. Our teachers were asked to begin live streaming classes, an experience we feared would be passive for those at home. Yet, as I walked into classes, I heard teachers facilitating discussions that included both in-person students and remote students, oftentimes talking to each other and expanding on each other's conversations. I saw teachers design lessons such that small groups of remote students collaborated in breakout rooms while those in the classroom did the same, before they all came back together for a class discussion. In a socially distant environment, we managed to provide our sixth-grade students with virtual free field trips. Our seventh-grade students were able to participate in discovery days, albeit modified, and our seventh and eighth-grade students were able to perform the Salem Witch Trials and Shakespeare socially distant. As Albert mentioned earlier, this has been a year of trying to modify all of our normal practices and, and to, you know, do as much as we can for our students and our family and our community. As such, as we, as we get to the end of the year, we've looked to modify our student tours and bring fifth-grade students over into the building. We've looked to modify, modify all of the programs that we provide for fifth-grade parents as we try and get them oriented to the middle school. And while we're going to do a town hall presentation for fifth-grade parents next week, we are going to invite them to an in-person event and our typical walk your schedule night later in the fall, or later in the summer. Fall would be a little too late. And for moving up, we're going to, it was important to us, while our assembly doesn't lend itself well to an outdoor environment because the, the video that the students enjoy so much is such a big part of it, and we couldn't do that outdoors, we are going to hold an assembly for students only socially distant in the auditorium on Thursday morning, and then Thursday afternoon, we are going to hold a drive-through event for families and students, complete with red carpet and balloons and all sorts of festivities here on campus in the afternoon. And all this, we accomplished this year and managed while implementing effective health and safety protocols and adjusting to state and federal guidance that continued to change all year long. As we look ahead this summer and fall, our focus in the middle school is going to be on our students, and it's going to be on providing supports for students both academically and socially, emotionally, to meet the developmental needs of them in a post-pandemic school year. A number of our summer curriculum projects reflect this. Currently in the planning stages, we have a number of projects. First, members of the math and ELA departments and I are discussing the implementation of targeted support programs for students at all three grade levels. These programs are going to focus on executive function skills as well as foundational skills and content areas. And at the same time, going to give, they're going to give our most vulnerable students an opportunity to begin to form relationships, meet their teachers, inform relationships, and build self-confidence. With regard to post-pandemic planning, members of the sixth-grade team will be redesigning their fifth to sixth-grade transition program to include more explicit instruction in the area of social-emotional wellness, a more comprehensive introduction to the use of technology in the middle school, because we use a different platform than the elementary school does, and thematic interdisciplinary lessons that are going to begin the school year. In addition, also in the planning stages, similar to the work of the Remote Learning Planning Group that we, we implemented last summer, we have grade-level representatives, members of our support staff, and myself are going to be discussing the formation of a Committee 6-8 to investigate and provide guidance for all staff and to plan SEL lessons across all three grade levels beginning in the fall. And finally, you'll recall that in an effort to ensure that every student is connected to an adult in the middle school, we piloted a program that we titled "The Kettle Project" during the last nine weeks of the school year. It included more than 50 staff and all BMS students, and while we recognized that our rollout wasn't ideal and, and the timing wasn't ideal, it was a program we wanted to try. We're in the process of looking to survey our students and our kettle leaders, get some feedback from them, something that we continue to, to plan to build on and grow on in the Some feedback from the middle school.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, John, for that. A lot going on this year. Can you just give a little more color on the Kettle Project? Was it academic or promotional? What was the, the purpose behind?
Sure. Excuse me. The, the purpose behind the Kettle Project, and I think I reported it out when I, when I spoke earlier in the, in the school year, and at that point, we were just in the planning stages. So, what we were looking to do is we were looking to connect all of our students and ensure that each of our students in the middle school had an adult that they were connected directly to. And that connection was a, was a weekly, you know, sometimes it was email, sometime, sometimes it was activities that were planned, perhaps it was a postcard home or a, or a phone call, and it was just an opportunity to ensure that all of our students had an adult that they could turn to if they had, you know, a, you know, a question, a problem, or just to build that connection with the school. It included all of our administrators and included all of our non-instructional staff. Mr. Cousins had a group, Mr. Bergen, myself, a number of high school staff also participated, and, and each of our kettle leaders had three to four students, five in some cases, that they were responsible for. So, it's a, it's a community-building project that we want to continue in the fall. Certainly, you know, we hope that there'll be a little bit more contact and interaction in person in a traditional school year than we had this year, but we, we, the underpinnings of the project itself are certainly valuable and we want to continue.
What is the significance of calling it Kettle, the Kettle Project?
Well, I didn't know this, but a kettle, by definition, is a group of raptors, most commonly referred to when talking about hawks.
I do remember now seeing that written somewhere, but I was just picturing Tico.
John, I would just ask you, you know, you talked a lot about the students. I'm just wondering how, how your middle school staff is doing. I mean, it's been a lot in the last year, and I'm wondering if you feel like they're seeing the, the end of the tunnel, if they're starting to feel a little bit better as we're, things are opening up?
Yeah, you know, I mean, I think, I think both end. I think they are seeing the end of the, the light at the end of the tunnel. I think they need to see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I think all of us need that opportunity to, to take a break and, and to kind of refresh, and I think once we do that, you know, we're also very hopeful. All of our planning is for a normal, traditional opening of school, and, and that's the only thing that's getting me through. I won't talk to anybody else about anything other than that, and I think the teachers feel that same way. So, I think once we, you know, once we're able to take a little break at the beginning of the summer, we'll come back refreshed, refreshed, and we can start planning and visioning for the future.
Great. Well, I hope they appreciate, and we know how much we appreciate everything that they've, they've done this past year especially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I just want to make one follow, comment. I want to just publicly acknowledge, I received today the BMS yearbook. The advisor is Carmella Fountain. That is the most inclusive yearbook I could ever imagine, the integration of the remote students with the in-person students, and how the photographs that were shared from home, it's beautiful. It is such, is such a beautiful book. When I received it, I started looking through that, I was blown away by how inclusive. So, I wanted to, you know, congratulate Carmella and you for the excellent publication.
There are Ubers available, sir.
How much are they?
Good sales pitch, sir. So, Chancellor, I do want to start before I talk about some points of pride and, and things we're looking forward to. Just a bit of a footnote that, and I actually said this earlier when I went back to my notes, it's funny, the first time I, I was able to stand in front of all of you in the auditorium at the beginning of the year when we talked about like opening school and everything. And I think it's an important point. I personally can't take credit for anything in my building, because none of it was really done in a, in a vacuum. It really was something with Albert's leadership over the summer, the subcommittees, everything we put together. There were a lot of voices, sometimes hard to manage, I'll, I'll admit certainly, because there's a lot of people who had a lot of love for what we were about to do, but everything I'm going to report on really was a communal effort and something that wouldn't have happened if my entire building, including the students, didn't really come together. So, it's been really an amazing thing to watch. So, points of pride, I think one of the first things that came to mind that I wanted to mention to you, and I just have a couple of examples, had to do with preserving partnerships across grades within my building and also across the buildings. And although we couldn't do as many, I mean, many of you who have sat at this table and heard our reports, you, you very often hear a lot of instances where the three buildings are working together and visiting each other and, and working through projects. So, it was a little tougher to do this year, especially at the beginning, you know, the first half of the year. So, a few things, I, I wanted to, once again, just give a shout-out to our CLS music department who provided an abundance of opportunities for older students to perform, for younger students, for students to work with outside groups. Brielle and Steph really just used a lot of their, of their skills to try to really expose the students of our buildings to some of the things the fourth and fifth graders were doing, and it was great to see. We had a Mrs. Johnson in her, in her room created a cross-grade artist study called, I titled it "Spread Love by Brandon Thrift," and he was an artist that she had met, visiting her sons down in Florida. He had kind of started a type of art or, or images that really coincided with COVID and not being able to do the normal things that he could do as an artist. able to do the normal things that he could do as an artist. So if you kind of come into, if you come into the lobby of Chancellor on our big screen, one of the slides is this, it just basically says "Spread Love" with a lot of color in the background. It's a really beautiful image. And we took that and created artwork with the students. So if you walk around, you'll see parts of, pieces of cardboard all over the building that are painted by students utilizing the same message. So that was something wonderful to watch and watch grow over time. Luckily, Fawn was able to work with her students and have Brandon livestream in, made videos for her students so she can show. So it was just a great partnership. Related to that also, this was really across all three buildings, the Unstoppable Creativity Group Exhibition, which I thought was quite impressive, and to be able to do that and find a way, even though he couldn't physically kind of show up and look at this work, I thought it was a wonderful thing. I also think my grade levels, very often, they found ways to create grade-level presentations that included remote students and their in-person peers and making sure it was a very inclusive thing. I was lucky enough many times over the school year to be invited and sent that Zoom link and saw how that was organized. So that was a major point of pride. You heard me a while back, may have mentioned, I remember showing you a slide about our Grade Two Reptile Assembly. Grade Four Books Journey Project still happening this year, we were very happy to see that move forward. Pat Sexton and her crew at Arts in Ed really helped make that happen, and they just found ways to do it. They also did it last year, which was amazing too, March to June, so I had to give them credit. Another example, the puppet shows that were presented by BMS students, and they performed fairy tales for K-1 CLS students, so they came over and they spent three days, four days, four separate times across four days in my building, working in the pavilion and the two tents and bringing those children out and doing class, one class at a time. So it was, those are just a few of many examples of those kind of cross-connections still happening this year. I also wanted to mention that I think, another point of pride for us in my building, I've always had people who are interested in trying to help, but this year, we really upped it and were able to do two-week deliveries. We were able to keep our backpack program in effect this entire year, all last summer, but all through this year as well. I had a little small army of aides that helped me pack boxes, and instead of kids going home with the backpacks, we delivered those two weeks' worth of food to those families to their houses, and we all assigned ourselves a group of families. So that's just something we've been very proud of to address food security in our community, was more important than ever this last year, and my staff really jumped at it. We even had, we organized donations around the holidays, so students were helping with that as well, and it was just amazing to see my whole building come together. A program that we've had for quite a while now, but to really, without a hiccup, just kind of move through and still offer that this year. I would be remiss without mentioning the other thing that I, another point of pride is the fact that we've been open five days a week at the elementary school. That was a goal that we worked with Albert, and it was a communal goal over the summer to try to make happen, and we did it. We literally have, like, a week, I feel comfortable saying it now, standing here. We looked a week and a half, and we did it, and we really closed my building like five days, the whole entire year, and it was all around the holidays. And I wanted to point out that we never even had a student outbreak, which was amazing. It showed that everyone, which is my final bullet point in this section, but that everyone really stuck together, followed the protocols that we made in August with so many unknowns, and really, we haven't changed many of them at all, including our dismissal procedures and things which take a little while, but it really was a way to keep people safe, and it worked. And the only reason we had to close the building was because of staffing and having, like, kind of outside, outside our school, tracing and things like that. So I wanted to bring that up as well. Staff and students at CLS, keeping true to our safety protocols, like I mentioned, decisions we made back in August, we couldn't have done it without their diligence and perseverance. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, points of pride, because I think it's an amazing, I just had this conversation with a family I toured with, I gave a tour to yesterday, actually, and just kind of mentioned to them about, you know, this year, I know my staff did, I did, we received so much positive from this community, and it, you know, it would be silly to say that it's all positive and that kind of thing, but this year, people really spent the time to reach out to us, to give us good feedback, to say, you know, I don't, you know, I've always thought you guys have been doing a good job, but I never reach out, and I really feel it's important to do that. And I got more of that than I've ever gotten this year, and it's really quite amazing. And related to that, my last kind of point of pride that I put here was, many of you know, you've heard me talk about our PBIS, the CLS brag tags and kind of identifying acts of kindness and all that, and a big part of that is our affirmations in the morning when I do my morning announcements. And we have an affirmation box for staff, we have an affirmation box for students, and I really do go in there every day and I pull one out. This year, there is no way I could have gotten through all the affirmations that were in that box from students, most of which were giving shout-outs about staff, their luncheon recess aides, just really amazing stuff. So that box is going to be still full when we leave for the summer, and it'll be interesting to pull that out. But I just, that was another thing I wanted to mention, that positivity, really, our students grabbed that and held on to it and really made, put real value in wanting to let people know around them the work that they were doing and the environment we created for them. So I was really proud of that. Looking forward, I did want to mention, it's happening next week, but we are doing our K graduation, our Grade Five Moving Up ceremonies, they're going to be outside, our Grade Five will be similar to last year, we'll be using the grandstands at the fairgrounds. Our kindergarten will look a little different, but we're going to do each individual class, which is kind of nice, a little bit smaller, but we're doing those outside as well. So I'm proud to be able to make that happen this year and work with my team. It's important to celebrate those rites of passage, I think that's important, so we really were able to make that happen. I'm looking forward to some of the new programming. We, believe it or not, in this crazy time, we've actually brought teams together and adopted Science 21 for a science curriculum. We're still making movements towards our units in writing, K-5. We're obviously in our third year of Big Ideas Math, so there's a lot of, in the last couple of years, there's really been a lot of curriculum changes, and we were still making them this year, even with all the shifts and everything. So looking forward to that. Really just kind of improving students' access to the curriculum and continuous growth, it's important, and we've been able to accomplish that. I mentioned earlier, being full-time, open full-time this year is something was great. Next year, sorry, open, next, being open five days a week this year was great, but we're really looking forward to open full-time next year for in-person teaching, a full day, so we're excited about that. And I think one of the biggest ones, I have a couple here, but one of the biggest ones really has to do with students working together. It was a real shock, you know, when it's in the emerging and developmental stage that students are in in our building, with all their academics, you know, from K to five and kind of moving through that continuum. A lot of times, we took for granted the fact that so much of our work is in like these small groups and we're working with kids, and so we're really looking forward to getting back to that, to getting to small group work, being able to work very, very close with students, hopefully, or closer than we did this year, certainly. It's an integral part of how we teach, and you really just, we didn't realize how important, you realize how important it is, but when it's gone, you're just like, wow, it's so hard to do what we do and not be able to pull the kids in their way. Two other things, as John said, we are looking forward to some SEL programming for students for our building, students that may have been remote this whole time, reaching out to them, kind of working with students about transitioning back, so we're looking forward to being able to provide that this summer. And another thing to look forward to will be Field Day next year, I'm looking forward to Field Day, even the Dunk Tank, but the Field Day at my building, it's really an amazing day.
Ah, yes, yeah.
It's an amazing day, and I think wraps up the year beautifully, and just not being able to kind of plan that back in February when we usually do, not knowing what was happening, we wanted to play it safe with the students, so we're looking forward to those types of events, where I can just stay soaking wet all day long for two straight days. So that's what's happening, Chancellor.
Well, thank you, Brett. I just, I can't state enough that the fact that Chancellor was open for five days is really a big deal. It was a big deal to our community, and it probably was scary for you and your staff in the beginning, especially to be the only one doing that.
Sure.
But it made a big difference, and it was definitely appreciated by the kids and the families.
Thank you, we were lucky. I had, I definitely had some colleagues call me from other districts being like, we're trying to do that, how? And I think having the space and having the staffing where we can make some of that happen certainly helped, but thank you.
Sure.
It was a lot of unknowns, and we're real proud to have been able to do it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, again, I'm going to echo my colleagues and begin by recognizing, in my view, really the awesome work of our professional staff, our teaching staff, our students during this school year, supported by the board, supported by district administration. Looking back, it's just, it's just so, so impressive. Not surprising, I think that's the right word, but so impressive what our kids have been able to achieve. Before I summarize the year, I do want to update you on some very recent events. Of course, we had our academic awards ceremony last week, and for the first time, it was conducted outdoors, and I think that for the foreseeable future, we'll conduct it outdoors where the permitting. It was a very enjoyable night. We recognized 100 students for their achievements. This is due to the work of our guidance department, Lisa Gilman, Sheri Mulkins, and a scholarship committee in the high school that's chaired by Robert Haywood and Jeff Palazzolo. It was a wonderful night. As you know, just on Saturday, we had our junior/senior prom, and I want to recognize the work of our junior and senior class officers who began early, early in the school year, thinking about how to host a prom amid, you know, really shifting regulations and guidance and rumor, but they were indefatigable in their planning. Their advisors did a wonderful job, and I'll say too, that the event was really a community event. Local vendors, Dells, Williams supported, our police department helped make sure Route Nine remained safe as our kids entered and exited. The school district supported with rapid tests for the day of prom, supported with chaperones, and it was, I'll tell you, it was just a joy to see our young people having fun with their masks off and being young on Saturday. It was a real, a real privilege to be able to do that. We also conducted our athletic awards ceremony where we recognized all of our senior varsity athletes, which was, as always, just a wonderful, inspiring affair. And today, thanks to the work of, in support of our PTSO and some volunteers in our teaching and professional staff, a congratulatory sign was delivered to the address of each of our graduating seniors to help them mark the end of their classes and help them begin to look forward to commencement, which is going to be on the 26th. In terms of the school year, I thought I would, it's a big topic, so I thought I would boil it down and talk about four things. I wanted to talk about use of technology or digital resources, I wanted to talk about social and emotional learning, I wanted to talk about assessment practices, and lastly, talk about the use of time. And within those categories, wanted to look at it in terms of before COVID, during COVID, and looking ahead. So to begin with technology, before COVID, as you are aware, most of our high school teachers used Google Forms, used Google Docs rather, to help mediate the instructional materials. A handful were using Canvas. Terms of web-based programs and applications to deliver instruction, again, those were used to enhance and augment instruction. This year, obviously, as you well know, almost all of our high school faculty transitioned very quickly to Canvas as the sole learning management platform. And just because we needed to do this, started to deploy, research and deploy a number of web-based and digital-based instructional resources and use them to great effect through the school year. Looking ahead, we would like to be able to give our students the ability to use those digital resources to demonstrate their learning. So we want to build upon our use of technology of digital resources this year so that students can now demonstrate learning using the same programs and applications that our teachers use to deliver instruction. So that's, in a nutshell, where we are with technology. In social and emotional learning, as you know, for the previous two years, we've been working with the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and their practice is to begin by teaching the adults in an organization about emotional intelligence and about the ruler approach. This year, having had that background, our teachers and our professional staff are, were, and continue to be very attentive to the emotional state of our students, ask questions about how students feel, check in on a regular basis so that they can help process and talk about how students are feeling, and thus give students a way to regulate their emotions. Amidst a year that was full of uncertainty and full of anxiety. Looking ahead for the next phase in the partnership with Yale, we'll begin over the summer with parent outreach, explaining what the ruler approach is, explaining what emotional intelligence is and why it's important, and then we'll begin to explicitly provide instruction in the ruler approach and emotional intelligence in our curricula in the upcoming school year. In terms of assessment, before COVID, we have very traditional, I'll say, assessment practices, tests, quizzes, essays, projects that teachers would evaluate and then return a grade to a student. This year, while we still had those assessment practices in place, we needed to expand the ways that we measured student learning and provided feedback. So in some of our classes, we would have portfolio assessments, enable students to reflect on what they were learning. We altered some of our assessments so that students would be able to do take-home tests. We, in some courses, adopted a standards-based grading approach in which the focus is on learning the material, not just aiming for a grade, and there were some project-based assessments as well. We'd like to build upon that approach over the summer into next year so that we can transition to a focus on learning rather than assessments as a way to measure students, as a way to rank, order, or sort students. So that's going to be a longer-term project that we want to put in place in service of our work with a growth mindset. Lastly, in terms of use of time, as we all know, before the pandemic, we had a traditional nine-period day, three minutes in between classes, and students would transition from class to class. As we are all well aware, this year, we had to, with the leadership of our superintendent, had to completely reinvent the use of time during our school day. And this led a number of our faculty to think about our use of time and to start having conversations and start doing some research about how to schedule a school, how to use time in a high school to meet the objectives that we have for our students. So Mr. Chemnitzer and I have begun those conversations with our faculties, and we're going to continue those conversations over the summer and look to do more research, site visits, maybe pilot some approaches, so that we can use the time that's available to us during the school day to best meet the needs of, best meet the needs of our students. So I believe that was all four, I lost count. In addition to the bigger trends, there are, you know, smaller approaches and practices that teachers have experimented with and have applied this year that we're going to continue into the upcoming school year because they're just good practices. For example, our PE teachers, as I think I may have mentioned, had a weekly check-in with their students, and just in a meeting with them today, they indicated that when they surveyed students about their experience this year, an overwhelming majority of students found those weekly check-ins very useful. So they're going to continue that practice next year, even in an in-person environment. So it's a quick overview and summary of the high school.
Is the ruler program being rolled out in curricula in specific classes coming up?
That's the plan, I'm meeting with implementations eventually next week, and we've targeted areas where whole grade levels are, you know, in a class health, for example, or English nine, for example, but the infusion is not going to be limited to those classes. All of our faculty have worked with the platform and are familiar with the vocabulary and the philosophy behind it.
Ed, I just want to say, I'm so happy to hear you talk about continuing some of the practices that we've done this year, ceremonies, the check-ins. You know, I know we're all craving to go back to normal, whatever we remember normal to be, but, you know, some great things did come out of this, and, you know, I'm hoping that some of those will continue and that will continue to change and grow, and it's just great to hear that you're already looking to do that. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, we have a presentation on the SEAL of Bilinguality Introduction and Overview.
So I'm going to do a little introduction to the SEAL and of Marissa. So I'm very excited about this presentation. It was a conversation, I think I received an email, I think, from Marissa saying about the SEAL of Bilinguality. It's something that I was very familiar with in my former district when it came into being as an option for students, and I was just so thrilled. And I want to credit Marissa for leading this charge. You know, she's been persistent, I think, over, over four years in making this to come to fruition, and I'm just so pleased that it's going to be, able to be accessed by Rhinebeck students. I think it's an excellent demarcation for students, and it's a nice aspirational goal, and it really values the benefit of being multilingual. I'm just so pleased, and I commend Marissa for taking this on and really fighting to see it through. So congratulations, Marissa. And I did share with the board, as you know, the handbook is in there as well, so.
Thank you so much for having me. I'll just be, thank you for having me, and thank you for all of the administrators for supporting this project over the course of those four years. It's really exciting that it's finally coming to fruition for the next academic school year. So I've never presented to the board before, so I figured I should introduce myself properly. My name's Marissa Fodey. I'm the English as a New Language teacher here. That's acronym for ENL is the acronym that we use. I'm also certified in English seven through 12. I speak Spanish and Portuguese. I'm also learning Korean. This year, I was very lucky to be a part of the cohort of 71 teachers nationwide that were part of the Fulbright Teachers for Global Classrooms program. And it's my sixth year at Rhinebeck and my eighth year at Teaching. And if you'd like to learn more about ENL, I have a hot link to my virtual parent slide that we, that was also a really great practice that we put into place this year. So what is the New York State SEAL of Bilinguality? Pretty much in a straightforward way, it is actually a seal affixed to a student's diploma on their graduation day. It's also a code that can be put on their transcript when applying for colleges and universities. But more than that, the intent of the SEAL of Bilinguality is to affirm the value of diversity in a multilingual society, to recognize the value of world and home language instruction in schools, to encourage the study of languages, to provide universities with a method to recognize and give credit to applicants who speak multiple languages, as well as to provide employers with a method for identifying students and people who speak multiple languages, and to prepare students with the 21st century skills that will benefit them in the labor Also, to strengthen intergroup relationships and honor the multiple cultures and languages in a community. So it's a fantastic overview that kind of overlaps with social emotional learning and equity and language and education and college and career readiness. So you have the handbook in front of you. There's also, you can find all of those resources online in PDF. So who can apply? Any high school student who can demonstrate mastery of standard academic English and any other language, including American Sign Language. I believe in the report of 2019, there were 59 languages that students achieved the SEAL of Bilinguality for. So student candidates must prove not only bilingualism, that they can speak and listen in two languages, but more importantly, bilinguality, that they can also read and write in multiple languages. And any, any high school student grades nine through 12 may apply. It's also offered at no cost to students. I found this subgroup slide very interesting. This was from one of the modules on the Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages page, that the general subgroup, students of students who apply for the SEAL are in these categories. So current English language learners, so students that I would work with in our ENL programs, former Ls, so students who have already exited the ENL program, never Ls, so students who have never been an English language learner but happen to be very gifted at world languages, like the ones we have here, French or Spanish. And then also, there's other students that are referred to as heritage language speakers who are never Ls or native English speakers, who have knowledge of two or more languages through their heritage or some sort of experience living abroad, that sort of thing. So the criteria that should be met, the first piece of criteria is that all students must complete all the requirements to graduate with a Regents diploma, and there's an asterisk there, because if a student is qualified to use an alternate pathway to graduation, that certainly qualifies them for the SEAL of Bilinguality. But in addition to that, there is actually, in the handbook that you have, I believe it's page 13 or 15, there's very detailed columns of criteria that must be met for a student to achieve the SEAL of Bilinguality. So they have to achieve three points of mastery of English, and then three points to demonstrate proficiency in their world language. And that can be achieved through averages in, in their English classes over the course of 11th and 12th grade, or by taking the Regents exam and scoring, I think it's above an 80, or by scoring commanding on two modalities of the NICE slot, which is our New York State English as a New Language state assessment. And then for, of course, for both sides, for demonstrating proficiency in English and a world language, it's expected that students create a culminating project. And that, there's a little bit of flexibility to that as well. It could be anything like a portfolio, it could be a presentation in one or both languages, it could be a TED Talk given in the target language. So it's really up to the, up to the student and also the SEAL of Bilinguality coordinator and their advisor how it's going to look. So I'll just briefly go through this. So culminating projects, as I just sort of said on the fly, could be research projects, scholarly essays, reflective journals, portfolios of artifacts. And I'll share this presentation with you because it has some hot links. You could look at the rubrics, and you could look at samples from other districts who have already implemented the SEAL. It's really cool to see what they're doing. And then I wanted to go through, like, a general timeline of how I, how this will roll out next academic year. So there's a planning and promotion period in September and October where students would attend general interest meetings after viewing the presentation in their English classes or in their world language classes, or, or talking to their guidance counselor and receiving a pamphlet about the SEAL. Basically, we're going to do, I'm going to do, I'm going to try to get everybody on board and involved and knowing about the SEAL come September. There'll be a little bit of a recruitment phase where students will attend general interest meetings. I'll have them sort of fill out self-assessments to see if they really feel ready for it, if they can commit to the responsibility of it for the course of the year. And they'll apply officially as a SEAL of Bilinguality candidate. Once approved, we'll have an appointment, and we'll kind of go through the timeline and figure out maybe what points they're aiming to achieve on each side of the matrix or rubric. We'll, I said, we'll create a timeline and map it out. But then there's also the implementation stage, and that'll happen around, anywhere from January to May, and that's when the student is actually working on their culminating project, beginning their research, working on their TED Talk, meeting with speakers of the target language and practicing their oral language skills, watching movies in those languages, reading books in those languages, keeping a journal, whatever it may be. We'll map that out. And over the course of that time, I'll be checking in with the students who are SEAL of Bilinguality candidates, and just, you know, checking on where they're at, monitoring them, figuring out how I can best support them, maybe linking them up with language mentors, that sort of thing. And then the best part is in June, when the student has actually achieved the SEAL of Bilinguality, and we can celebrate with, with an academic awards ceremony and really truly honor them and acknowledge them for their skills. I just added this little being bilingual is a superpower. It's, it's, it's so, it's so often that bilingual students aren't recognized for, for these incredible skills, and it's so wonderful that finally this year we, we are. And it also overlays with, New York State just came out with a framework for being culturally responsive and sustaining that in schools, and it just completely overlays with that as well, that we'd be creating a welcoming and affirming environment to multilingual learners, we're fostering high expectations and rigorous instruction, and we're creating inclusive curriculum and assessment, and engaging in ongoing learning and support. And those are some resources, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for having me. And congratulations to our retirees. Happy to answer any questions.
I'd just like to echo Albert's, you know, tenacity, tenacity, and sticking with this. I remember back in 2017 approving some of work for, for a couple of you, and I'm just so happy that this is finally coming through. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a general question. You said it was open through nine through 12. When a program rolls out such as this, what's the kind of sweet spot that you see kids getting involved?
That's a great question. I feel like if they were wanting to have it on their transcript to send out to colleges, they would probably want to start 10th, 10th through 11th grade to start thinking about it. But that could also be mentioned in a college essay. It's not necessary. It could be part of their letter of recommendation from a, from a teacher, so that's not completely necessary. I think the sweet spot really is more 11th and 12th grade when their language skills are stronger. It seems through what I've noticed other districts are doing, that 12th grade is really when the students focus on it. Maybe they're working on it throughout the course, or they're thinking about projects that could count as their culminating project and sort of building up a portfolio. But in 12th grade is really when the, you see your, your work, your hard work pay off. Yeah. Any other questions?
How would, how does, how will students find out about this? I mean, besides the students that you have, the average student, how would they know about this?
So I'm hoping to put together a video, basically a narrated slideshow such as this that they could watch on either YouTube, or hopefully the world language teachers will show it at the beginning of the year. I'm also hoping to put together pamphlets and to add, basically to create a framework that could go on our school website and my own personal teacher website, and then obviously just speaking with all of the teachers and in our district, and hoping also to reach out to the community such as Culture Connect to get the word out so that more students could get involved.
Yeah. I think there are kids that, you know, maybe their grandmother's Italian or whatever, so they've always, you know, they speak it, and they probably don't think maybe it's too valuable.
Yeah. There are so many students like that, like heritage, heritage speakers is the term used, that I, I'm not, I wouldn't know our candidates for the SEAL of Bilinguality. So the more that word, word spreads out, the better our applicant pool and bigger our applicant pool is so we can acknowledge their skills.
Thank you for being here and presenting to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Krista underscore, it's such a powerful statement for the district to, to say it's important, like the value of that, what it does for your brain, and this is something that students will plan for in their sequencing, and it's something to look forward to. So again, again, thank you, Marissa, for that.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to board committee reports of stakeholder relations.
So our discussion focused on the importance of sharing and telling our district story by recognizing the accomplishments of our students and our staff and various departments. And we agreed on the importance of how to highlight student work and provide coverage for these accomplishments. We talked about different ways to do that, emails, social media, the district website, and also brainstormed ways of involving students in sharing that story. And one of our ideas was collaborating with Rhinebeck Reality or a student intern working with Albert to help bring the media to the district-sponsored communication tools. Our decision was that we are making a recommendation that the board consider developing a goal around how we effectively share our district story in an equitable, positive, and consistent way, and we would further ask for input on preference for how best to involve students in this process.
So I would say this is, this is certainly a topic that we've talked about for years. I mean, certainly, you know, our social media presence could be improved. We've talked about newsletters, we've talked about lots of their, you know, lots of these same things, and the question always came down to the who, who will do it? Not that we didn't want to do it, or it wasn't ideas, it was just who's going to be responsible for it. So I think that's still the question, and if we had the who, I think that person could bring a student in. I think that's a great idea, that, you know, when you read their newspaper, you know, they have great insight. So to me, it's still the who.
So I think like, having experienced a year, again, it was a year, an interesting year, the, I, what we have to almost do is get, the who really is everyone, because there's so much good happening, but we need someone to just tell the story. I can disseminate, but I need support in like the what was it, tell me more about it. Because right now, I feel like an archaeologist, I go try to dig, and I'm like, okay, how can I tell? So if we can, if we just have like, using technology to help people submit, like, this was the grade level involved, you know, and just even throw together a few sentences, and we could just very quickly, because it's relatively seamless, and I think with our new website, it's going to be even easier, easier. So it's almost like it's a whole collective. I do think having a student intern would be a great way for anybody who has a passion to, wants to continue and be able to like show, you know, I think in some ways we could craft it as community service even, there's a lot there. But I think that right now, there's just, a lot of stuff is just done, and it's just kept in a small circle. We almost have to create that culture of saying, hey, could you give me a quick write-up of that? I'd like to promote it.
Yeah. I mean, we should be shouting all the great things they're doing.
With this beautiful art thing, I was so impressed with that, and I was, you know, so, you know, I went and I wrote notes off of the poster on the wall and put it out there, and, you know, so many people were commenting on just the image of it. And so that's just, we have to get everybody, I think, the who, but I think it's actually the how, how does that happen? Like, do I write it up? Like, give me more specifics of saying, what information do we need? And just send us a picture, then we can have it happen. I, I think it's an excellent idea for a board, a board goal, like the committee recommended. I know that has been in the past, but I think things are different. I think we've gotten a better handle on technology. I would love to see that as a, as an actionable goal, for us to focus on like, how do we promote and celebrate and all of that moving forward.
I mean, I'm, I've always been on board with that. I think it's a great idea. I think it's good for, even, you know, when you have elementary kids, you have no idea the great things that go on in the high school, or if you're in high school, you forget what they're doing there, just to, community-wide, school-wide, to just, everybody to see what's going on.
Well, tonight's is a perfect example. We had a great presentation about the SEAL of Bilinguality, and most likely, we will all feel informed, like, all of you sitting here will feel like you know it's happening. I, until right this second, right now, wouldn't speak like, oh, I should make a news story, but we should make a news story about that.
Absolutely.
Just to have it out there and to celebrate it as something like we're proud of. And that is the type of, of, I think, approach we have to take, is like, almost taking into perspective of somebody who isn't in this room, how can we get that story out?
Feels like maybe too basic of an idea, but I know Google Forms can be a very simple, effective tool for standardizing, you know, what information you need for, to build a story, and for getting out a link to anybody to be able to submit, and then it goes, it gets forwarded to, you know, Google.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly the type of system. We have to get the system set up.
Yeah, it's a really easy system. I've used it in a number of circumstances of gathering this exact, I mean, not for stories, but I need all this information, I need it every time, you know, and I need to be able to make it accessible for lots and lots of people, an easy link, so. Make two cents.
It's a great idea. Does the rest of the board have a sense of which of those avenues that we sort of brainstormed would be your first choice in terms of as an intern, or partnering with Rhinebeck Reality, or perhaps approaching the media department about that? In terms of next steps?
I mean, I think not just one. You know, I definitely like the idea of Rhinebeck Reality, but I don't know whether that fits in with, you know, their, their interests and goals, but it seems like a really good thing to like, here's an easy content idea, prompt for, for them to build off of, to build stories off of and communicate. But I also, I mean, I think each of the ideas But I also, I mean, I think each of the ideas has merit, if we could move forward with multiple, that would be good.
Is just, just looking at the current realm of what Rhinebeck is, or are we going back to the 1940s when this was all created and the kind of a history, and then leading up to here, this is where we are now?
No, I'm sorry. When I mean story, I mean, an insight is what's happening now.
What's happening now. Okay, that's good.
I don't really want.
You don't, you don't want.
We have Mark, we don't need the story.
You don't need 16-year history.
That's a good question, though, Tom.
It is a good question.
To scope the project, yes, that feels very overwhelming to go back.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see more, even at building levels, like, you know, like now, all we have, we have like the district page, and then we have, we have sports. Like, those are the two avenues, I think. It'd be nice for each building to kind of be promoting themselves, whether they have students working with the building or not. And then there's also a district for maybe bigger events, but, you know, because people, people are interested primarily in what involves them. So if you're an elementary kid, that's where you want to mostly go. You know, if I want to know the score of the game, I'd go to the sports page, you know, go to the sports player page, but, so I think you almost have to look at it multiple layers to it.
That's a good point.
That's really why I would love to see it as a board goal, because that would then give, like, a little impetus to say, okay, let's, like, strategize. We can then work, we could work with the administrators, work with the teachers in the buildings and say, look, here's a goal, what are your ideas? Because I think that's really where the ideas are going to come from, are from those, the practitioners, those who are using it. So I really hope we can find a way to craft that into a goal that we all get excited about, because I personally would be so excited to have everybody working toward it.
Yeah. And it could look different in different buildings.
Exactly.
They have the newspaper at the high school, so that could lead itself to how that, you know, in elementary, they had a newspaper for a little while, but, you know, that might be something that they get a student intern, and, you know, it could look different, different places, so.
I was expressing, I had a meeting with elementary music teachers today, this concept in my head, it was already a board goal, I was like, I would like, I want to work on this. And so I expressed how a concert doesn't have to only be a finished, perfect package of performance, it can also be explaining, like, how we got here, like, what was the most challenging part of this piece? People would love to hear a student talk about that. So a concert can be an educational thing for the audience, and that's what I mean about, like, getting everybody to learn more about, like, what is, how does this all happen? Like, how the sausage is made, they say, whatever. But, so, I think it'd be great to work on it, to spend some, a good portion of a year to really focus on concrete practices around this.
But we have our goals meeting coming up very soon, so.
This is just the lobbying effort.
Could look at it the other way, like, Ron is on the books. All right. Anything else for stakeholder relations?
No, that was all.
Okay. So we're going to move on now to good news. Anyone want to share any good news?
I got, I got two in athletics. Congratulations to varsity baseball. They really had a dominant season, section champions. I think they were 13-1, I think, for the, which is just incredible. And as well, to our track and field, we had many class champions. The boys and girls four by 400 relays were both champions. We also had, and that included, we also had the 100-meter and 400-meter champion, 200-meter champion, 400-meter champion, 400-meter hurdles, and also the high jump champion. So it was really successful, and I know we heard Mr. Boucher's presentation, but, you know, I could see a lot of it, and you just see so much spirit and enthusiasm, and it just, you know, it's not only the results, it's more about the process, but it's nice to see that sort of success, because there's nothing that beats that thrill, you know, for a young person, to feel that and to have your name champion associated anytime, I think is, is an amazing accomplishment. So I want to congratulate the coaches and the athletes for a great spring season.
Well, you took my two, but I also, you know, we had, that's okay. Good news, good news. The academic awards, I just, we had a lot of awards given out, but I just want to shout out to our generous community that helped put a lot of the scholarships that are given out. Our kids end up getting some nice awards, and I just want to always recognize our community, because it's not without the support, those wouldn't happen.
Hi, and Diane, just quickly, back to sports, I just wanted to acknowledge Coach Denatali and the boys' modified baseball team, which went 6-0. The coach noted it was his first undefeated season ever, so I think you might have some good varsity results in the coming years, too. Just congrats to them.
It's so exciting. We were, like, not having enough players, and they went, not only have a team, but to go undefeated. That's great. Anybody else? Any more good news? Okay. Any old business? I just want to remind the board, if you haven't completed your survey yet for our board retreat, to please do so, I think by tomorrow, like, as soon as possible. If you don't have the link, I can resend it again if anybody even get it, but it's very short, it doesn't take a lot of time, but if you could get that done. Do you have any old business? Any other old business? Okay. Another opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, any other? I do not have any other. Okay, we're going to move on to our action items. Anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the following consent items. All those in favor? Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the following grant awards from the Rhinebeck PTSO lawn signs for senior class, submitted by Ed Davenport in the amount of $820. Funding part of the eighth grade moving up ceremony, submitted by Deidre Cake in the amount of $500, and funding part of the fifth grade moving up ceremony in the amount of $249.62.
Second.
Any discussion? Obviously, we want to thank the PTSO for their generous donations. All those in favor? Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the four-year probationary appointment of Eric Thomas as a physical education teacher assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 2nd, 2021, at the salary of MA Step 4, $68,691, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2020-21.
Second.
Any discussion? Want to congratulate him on his appointment? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Samantha Casada as Living Environment Teacher, assigned to Rhinebeck High School, effective September 2nd, 2021, at a salary of MA Step 2 plus 1, $64,695, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2020-21.
Second.
Any discussion? Congratulations, Samantha. Welcome to Rhinebeck. All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Evelyn Brenney as sixth-grade math teacher assigned to Bulkeley Middle School, effective September 2nd, 2021, at a salary of MA Step 13 plus 6, $89,363, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2020-21.
Second.
All those in favor? I mean, any discussion? Sorry. We congratulate, welcome to Rhinebeck. All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to grant tenure to Daria Berry in the tenure area of Teaching Assistant, effective September 1st, 2021, and may be revoked by the Board of Education up until that time.
Second.
Any discussion? Congratulations to Daria Berry. All those in favor? Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to grant tenure to Scott Malisi in the tenure area of Music Course, effective September 1st, 2021, and may be revoked by the Board of Education up until that time.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, congratulations to Mr. Malisi. All those in favor? Okay. Can I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for coming.